Order this ad hoc committee. Called order the ad hoc committee for the FY26 amended budget. Let me thank all of my colleagues for being present, coming to the table. Let me just kind of briefly lay out the purpose of this meeting is to finalize and to set an alternate version of the budget compiled by Chairwoman Hill and sponsored by Councilman Davis and myself, and hopefully gain the support of at least five of our colleagues. What we're striving to do is find some cuts or reallocations in the budget while considering a modest tax increase in order to fund a much needed fire police pay raise. So with that, if you'll look in your folder, you'll find several materials this afternoon. One, I want to draw your attention to this Tennessee code annotated, basically saying that the council does not have to approve a line item budget, we can approve a budget that funds each department. And so there is a paper in your budget book as well as in your folder that looks similar to this, and this is what we would replace the operating budget with a page that looks very similar to this, that just allocates dollars to each, am I trying to say, each department. And then I had asked for, many of you were concerned about individuals or people losing their jobs, I had asked for a list of budgeted but unfilled positions in the city, which currently there's like eighteen million dollars worth of budgeted but unfilled positions. And what I've done is gone through and we have highlighted in yellow positions that are currently in the process of being filled, or at least applying to be filled. And then I made a few more additions of things that I felt like we would want to pull out. With everything pulled out of what I think may need to be pulled out, that still leaves about three million nine hundred thousand dollars, somewhere between three and four million dollars of budgeted but unfilled positions. So that may ease some folks' minds about people losing their jobs or being cut.
Can you tell us the difference between these two versions?
Okay, so one, so the version that's, if you'll notice the little highlighted one down here at the bottom, I went back through and highlighted positions that I did not feel like we needed to pull out of that. That make sense? This, the one that's, so there's a little one that's highlighted in the bottom.
The page number on the bottom.
Oh, I'm like, that's the one that I manipulated to come up with the three million nine hundred thousand dollar number. That make sense? So everything that is highlighted in that version is pulled out of the eighteen million dollars. Councilman Clark, you look like you-
I'm just trying to follow, so everything that's highlighted, that you have highlighted-
Well, everything that's highlighted. Some that the administration highlighted that are currently in the process of hiring, and then there's some more that I have highlighted, I'll see if I can find one, here, on page four, there's under community development, aquatics, there's about three lines there that I've highlighted, things that I didn't think need to come out of this budget.
Which ones are your highlights, Councilman?
Mine are just the single, just like I took a highlighter and went-
Oh, I see, it's like that faint, it's the faint blue-
That was this yellow right here.
It's the yellow.
So head lifeguards-
If it, let me try to make it easy, if it has yellow on it, it is pulled out of that eighteen million dollars.
Even if it's all the way across?
No, it's staying, if it's yellow, it's stayed.
Oh.
Yellow's stayed.
If it's yellow, it's staying in-
Okay, I was about to-
I was too.
Well, what I'm saying, so there's eighteen million dollars of budgeted but unfilled positions.
So positions that nobody's working in right now.
Nobody's working in this position.
And there's eighteen million dollars- And this is the highlighted one?
But I boiled it down to about three million nine hundred thousand, and that includes some of my markers. Does that make sense now?
Yes.
I don't have a question.
Yep, but you have a follow up?
No, she can go.
Okay.
I have a question, so I, this is for me, I need to level set myself for this meeting, because I need to understand kind of where we are, and I get a lot of questions from constituents and things like that, so I just need to level set this.
Okay.
So, in June, we passed unanimously a budget. Correct, am I correct?
That's right.
You all, none of us, okay, so it was a budget that was passed, it was flat, no tax increase, included all services. What this is doing is going back, wrenching back, grabbing that budget, opening it back up and saying, these are some cuts that we can make in here, so that we can supplement the pay, or supplement the fire and police-
Fire and police pay.
Fire and police pay, okay. And in that, because in that original budget, my district got all the services, so my concern is coming into this budget and making cuts, I would say, and I'm gonna ask Madam Chair, because we'll never sit next to each other, in this, so you are proposing ten million dollars-
Well, let's get into that, just to get it, I'm gonna turn it over to Chairwoman Hill, and I want her to explain how we got to the ten million dollars worth of reallocations, okay? But let me reset it, you're correct. We're gonna reach back simply because it was my understanding, and this is on me, this is, this is a, I guess, something that I want to see, an amended version that I want to put on the agenda, that Councilman Davis and I sponsored. But yes, it reaches back into a budget that we just passed, because it was my understanding that we were just gonna pass a budget to get us something to the cop trailer, so that we could then look at fire and police pay. And as Councilman Davis pointed out, from this table, we were told the administration was gonna roll up their sleeves, and they were committed to finding half. Is that correct?
That's right, in front of DAS as well.
And so what I'm doing, since they didn't follow through on that commitment, that's what I'm trying, I'm attempting to do, I'm rolling up my sleeves and trying to find half. So half of it will come from a property tax increase, and half of it will come from cuts in the budget, or thereabouts.
Thereabout.
So, but I'd like, I'd like to kind of turn it over to Councilwoman Hill to at least let's get into the meat of it, and then if we have questions about what we're doing, we can follow up from there, because what I really want to leave here with is something that we can place on the agenda that says alternate versions, that has all of the numbers on it that we need. That include fire and police pay raises. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Hill, and Councilwoman Hill, if you want to explain the two pages, the kind of the budget sheet and then the worksheet. So we got budget amendment sheet, and then we got budget amendment worksheet. So Councilwoman Hill, you'll take it from here, I appreciate it.
Okay. I have another question for you, and so we just got this information about the no line item, the, we don't have to pass a line item budget, we can just pass a general-
Department budget.
Department budget, and so the plan here is to pass a general department budget with the cuts, and then allow the mayor to take the cuts?
That's correct, or the department has to allocate the cuts.
That's the best way to-
How they feel, since they're the ones-
But, okay, so just, again-
That is the plan, the proposal that we're making.
So they've done the work from January to May to bring us theirs, and then we're gonna go back in-
That's right.
And cut it-
That's right.
But not tell them what to cut.
That's right, that's right.
Does that seem reasonable? I guess it does, because we're here.
It does seem reasonable to me.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna give it over to-
Look, if it doesn't seem reasonable to five of you, then we're going about our business, but-
Okay, well, I just, well, I will say, the reason it doesn't seem reasonable is because it doesn't account for what is being cut, because for me, for districts, and I just want to say this out front at the beginning, as Madam Chair gets into her details, and I said yes in June to the budget, which was passed unanimously, my people expected to get every single service that was inside of that budget, inside of that flat budget. If you're going back and cutting out of the budget, and your district is okay, and that's okay, you gotta do what your people, we know, we gotta do what our people told us to do. So if districts one, and district three, and district two decide, hey, they need to cut the budget, then when I see this, I need to see line item deep cuts out of your district.
Okay, let me, let me go back, let me go back and reset this meeting.
Yeah, please.
This meeting is to set an alternate version.
Okay.
And that's the purpose of this ad hoc committee.
To set an alternate version.
And I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Hill, if she will begin, so that we can set an alternate version.
Okay.
And that version can be voted up or down.
I hear you.
Thank you.
I hear you, Chair.
I have one more question, just about this paperwork, okay. The items that are highlighted, whether they're all the way across, or where there's just a little highlight, these are the items that you suggested we keep.
That's right.
Okay, the items that are not highlighted are up for maybe proposal to, those are opportunities to cut, potentially.
Well, those are opportunities, and really what I was trying to show there is that in each department, there's opportunities for a director to just freeze those positions and not cut anybody, so that nobody would lose their job.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to point out, that there is room in this budget with cuts for people not to lose their job, and I can expound on that just a little bit more after-
Okay, that's all I needed.
All right, Councilwoman Hill, if you would, let's reset to our alternate version.
So, so like Councilman Henderson and Councilman Davis, I was expecting and had advocated for the city to meet us halfway on a budget amendment that would fund fire and police salary increases without putting the full burden of those increases on new revenue. And so in the budget work session schedule, the third work session was structured in such a way that in the morning, we were asked for council to bring ideas for reaching that, for reaching our individual goals, and then in the afternoon, the mayor brought his proposal. This proposal is not in a answer to the mayor's proposal, it existed before the mayor, which was brought to us, but what I looked to do was find a way to get halfway, as we had discussed, and you all might remember, I elevated the possibility of doing an extension on our budget, and doing this all at one time, so that we could have looked at it all at once with the full knowledge of how much money we needed for those fire and police raises, but as a council, we decided to move forward. And so my thought with this original proposal, and honestly, I expected that many of us would have brought ideas, and we would kind of all throw them on the table, and I think that's sort of where we are now, with Councilman Henderson leading this ad hoc conversation. So what this has done, if you take a look at the, it's the one that has a little bit smaller numbers, FY budget amendment worksheet, detailed view, it has a little bit more data on it, this is where I try, and I shared this document with all of you a couple times, because I wanted to be very transparent about kind of where my thought process is. So in talking with Weston Porter, our chief financial officer, he identified that there were several things that were already allocated in the budget, that he would refer to as being untouchable, so those are things that are debt, they are committed, grant commitments, things like that. And so I spoke with Weston in preparation to get this into a format that we could vote on, and so I determined from him, with him, what departments those items fell under. So those items fell under general government and agencies, agencies and quasi-agencies. And so I wanted everybody to be able to see how these numbers came together, but essentially, the general government agency line item, we had set aside as a council in that last meeting before we voted on the budget, we set aside five million dollars as a commitment, an earnest commitment toward finding half. Remember, that's Kevin brought that, and Chip brought that, Councilman Henderson brought that to this council and said, we want to get halfway there, and here's five million dollars to prove it, so that's what that five million is. And then what I, I believe strongly that the mayor and leaders of departments are committed to the one Chattanooga Plan, and that they are an organization that is purpose driven. And so when I thought about finding a middle way, I thought about how, as a leader in my own right and other places, I know my business best, and then when I've worked for other people, I've known my department very well, and I think it's important to have leaders have agency in those discussions. So what I have recommended here, and what you'll see detailed, is a handful of departments that I saw as being the foundational elements of government, so public works, fire, police, and parks not receiving any cuts to their budgets. And then a leadership demonstration from our city council, and from our mayor's office of a 10% cut, and then a 15% cut from the total community development budget, that to me, the reason I chose that was because we, as a council, for the last four years and however many months that I've been serving on council, and in conversation with the administration as well, have understood that the direction the mayor wants to head has not been the direction he's been able to get to, we as a council have not been pleased with the direction we're headed, and so I think there's some opportunity there for distilling down, that's my perspective. And so that's why I recommended that cut, and I think it's interesting, and I appreciate, Councilman Henderson, you bringing this, because you all have said, some of you have said you're concerned about anybody losing their job, and I completely respect that concern. So it's interesting to see that we do have open positions to the tune of eighteen million dollars, but also that even if we fill the ones that are most mission critical, that we stood, that's still, just what, three, four million?
Right about four million.
So that is what you're looking at here, so when we see these reductions, that adds up to 10.1 million dollars in reductions, which, so that takes that five million plus 5.1 million, and gets us to the halfway point, give or take, to meeting that goal of funding 10% of the, or, excuse me, 50% of the raise that we want to get to with existing revenue. You'll see, I also, you know, different people have mentioned different concerns that you all have about the potential of pursuing this direction, and so I did go ahead and add to the bottom of this worksheet what we would, what kind of revenue we would generate if we went to a 13 cent or a 14 cent increase. So that would still put us at up to, just, we wouldn't tip over a 10% increase, we would get to 9% with even a 14 cent increase that would generate 2.1 million dollars. So I am personally very committed always to finding the middle way, I think when we compromise, we come up with our best solutions. And so I come here, as I come to most meetings, with a very open hand. District two has continued to be pretty evenly split on going for the $1.99, or being very worried, the other portion of, I've talked with you all about that, about being really worried about the impact, and I do think it's interesting that the tax frees, you know, will impact people next year, right? So if we were to take a more moderate approach here, people would be frozen at a lower level of taxation than they would be if we went with the $1.99. So what you see on this other page is the inverse of the savings. What you see here on the FY26 budget amendment page, this is the structure that we would need to drop this into an amendment that would be votable, and so what you see here is the opposite, so this has caused me much confusion, where we've got 10.1 on one row and 12.8 on the other row, that's because this is an overall increase of 12.8 million dollars in expenses, because we've added in the additional 9 million and 14 million dollars for fire and police on lines H and J, so where here we were reducing, and here we've taken the reductions, but we've also added in 23 million dollars. So that, so this is what would be, we would be saying that headed into this next, into the fiscal year, the amended total revenue number would be 358 million dollars, 98,700, 578. Does that cover what you wanted me to cover?
Yes, ma'am, great, in fact, the 12, the 12,800,000 is our shortfall, basically, of what we would need to fund fire and police at a level that they need to be funded with. Okay, so are you at a place that you're ready to, I guess, turn it over?
Yeah, I suppose that, my understanding is that if we were looking at the, in the same structure, the administration's proposal, which again, came after this proposal, but instead of 12, we would see 50 million, that's the goal, to raise 50 million dollars, would be the shortfall.
So again, let me, as I open this table up, let me remind you that our goal here is to come up with some kind of agreement for an alternate version. If you have questions, I'm happy to try to answer those, but we're not here to debate whether we need an alternate version or not, we're here to get an alternate version set so that we can place it on the agenda. Is that fair? And I will try to keep us headed in that direction. Councilman Elliott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple questions. Mr. Chairman, your proposal for the vacancies, do we consult the administration as we look to some of these vacancies to see what type of impact this would make towards operations?
All, so this is what I asked for, I asked for a list of budgeted but unfilled positions.
Okay.
So the first, the first paper that I got had everything listed on it, and then I got the second version, which had all of the positions that were, I guess, currently in process, and in looking through the remainder of that, I just am the one that labeled the ones that I felt like were, as Councilwoman Hill pointed out, kind of critical mission. So no, I have not, I'm sure if it's on this list, the administration would tell you they need every one of them. So all I'm saying, look, don't misunderstand the purpose of this page. The purpose of this page is the fact that these positions are not filled, okay? There's nobody in them.
Nobody's losing their job.
Nobody is losing their job, that's the only purpose for this page, is to demonstrate. Now, I want to go back, and let me just kind of highlight a few things, in city attorney's office, the unfilled and budgeted positions would cover the cuts that we have made to his department. IT is the same, IT is covered, finance is covered, economic development is around 189,000 Early learning is probably the most, at 167,000 dollars. If we put a million dollars back into community development, we would be within 150,000, or about even, with the positions that are not filled. So an administrator could say, okay, I'm just not gonna fill these positions, and therefore nobody's gonna lose their job. And that's all I'm saying, that's all this sheet was trying to demonstrate, is there are positions currently not filled, that they could freeze, so that nobody would lose their job. That's all, that's all that sheet's for.
I appreciate it, and I'm gonna say this, and y'all bear with me, it's been several weeks since I had a bit of a monologue, I'm back, Councilman Clark held it down for a little bit, so y'all just bear with me, because I'm here. You know, I have been very honest with my district that these conversations were to come, even on the campaign trail, and I have been steadfast with the perspective that all of this, it's important, A, to, that we fund fire and police, I don't think anybody disagrees with that. I've been honest with my district, all of this cannot land on the backs of taxpayers. We have made some headway, I will give the administration, they helped us fund five million dollars. As somebody who has worked on the other side of city government, I understand a lot of it, there's still fat to cut, right? A lot of what goes into our budgets are largely staff. A lot of these departments don't have excess amount of programming or whatnot, and believe, there are some staff positions that I do not think should exist, but I said this last week, and I remain steadfast, that I do not believe in cutting anyone's job. I'm not gonna take food out of one person's mouth to put it in another. And so whatever fat was added before I got here, and was added into that previous budget, I have no control over, they have jobs, that is what it is. And I said this last week, and Chairwoman Hill, I really appreciate your work and due diligence on this, but my concerns still remain the same. I do not support blanket percentage cuts. We cannot do it, because we do not know what we're cutting. We have a huge responsibility, and a lot of authority, the money sits with council. We give the administration a cap of 50,000 dollars, you don't have to come to us, you got 50 grand to play with, but we could lower that to 3 dollars tomorrow, and if they want to spend anything over 3 dollars, they have to get our permission. The authority to spend dollars sits with council.
So Councilman Elliott, let me start-
If I could, well-
Chairman, let me finish, please. I didn't want to debate whether this was a good idea or not.
No, 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 I'm getting to your point, yeah.
Please.
Yeah, I'm gonna wrap it up.
I want to get something on the agenda for an alternate version, you're getting me there?
I'm getting there, let me finish, don't let me stop.
Okay.
I'm getting you there. And so with that, it's a huge power and authority we have to oversee the dollars, one that we should not take lightly, and if we put a huge mandate on the administration to say, hey, here are this percentage cuts, go at it, and without the knowledge of what extra meat is in those departments, we could be very easily cutting people's jobs, and in this economy, I just can't, I can't stomach it. And also, I'm very concerned about the wop side of nature of some of these cuts, I said this last week, I'm gonna start with community development, I said this last week, we, you in your documents, you cited the poor performance of the department. I don't necessarily believe the performance of the department as a whole has failed, I had concerns about this leadership, and I do not believe we should punish an entire department for inadequate leadership, and frankly, this is an apartment that plays a huge role in many of my communities, especially black and brown communities across the city, and if we start cutting staff, or centers, or anything else, where do we start? Because I know in my district, I have Eastdale, who, that center is the heart of that community, and plays a pivotal role, and I have Glenwood, who currently serves as a senior center, and I doubt anybody wants to touch a senior center, they'll be on you fast enough, white on rice. Um, so I, I am very concerned about the wop-sided nature of what these percentage cuts, even if we were to look at blanket's percentage cuts, which I don't even wanna go down that road, which answers your question, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't think this is where we start. If we're gonna do this, let's do it responsibly. Because if we put a mandate on the administration that leads to undue, un- unspoken consequences, we're at fault. 'Cause right now, it's our responsibility. And I can't support that. Now, if we tilt our approach and say, let's really open these budget books, I don't know about you guys, but I spent time going through this budget book this weekend, and actually looking at what could be cut. Line item by line item, I will support that.
Do you have a list? I'd love to see it.
I have a list, but y'all are proposing it.
No, no, we're here to create an alternate version.
We're here to create an alternate version.
We're creating an alternate version.
So this is the time to bring your line item cuts.
If you got, if you got.
Y'all let me finish, I got the floor. Y'all let me finish. And so, I support, um, Mr. Chairman, even look at vacancies, 'cause that's part of what, what I opened up. But you know, part of this too, you know, which of these positions are mission critical? I don't know that, 'cause I don't run the operations of the city. The mayor does. And so even as we're looking to cut some of these positions, how necessary are they?
Well, we're not looking to cut them, we're, we're saying freeze them.
Excuse me, reallocate them, uh, excuse me, reallocate their line items, so they don't exist, or whatnot. Um, so I think we just have to be honest with what we're saying, and this is the last piece, and I'm gonna be quiet. Um, I want somebody to correct me if I'm wrong on this. But when we pass budgets, are we not passing a top-line amount for the administration to spend every year? The administration just turn around and move money around if they want to. And they legally can do that. So, it's almost semantics as what we're going into on this part. Um, and then, honestly, if that's the case, we're almost wasting our time. Because if they say this is really critical, what's to stop them from just moving that money line item on over here, and say, this is what we're gonna fund? Now, we're gonna talk about how do we close the gap to, um, properly fund fire and police, which we absolutely have to do? Let's talk about that, in a way that's a little bit more effective, but I'm nervous we're going down a rabbit hole that may not really do much. Um, and so, that's my piece.
Is there a proposal for an alternate version?
Right now, that is what I wanna level set going into this conversation, to know, for my colleagues, so you guys can know where my head is. And so I'm interested in hearing anybody else's thoughts before I go any further.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Dotley?
Yeah, thank you so much.
No, go ahead, you, you're.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just raised my hand.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I was, uh, acknowledging that.
Ring that bell, to me, not now, to me, not now.
So, I did wanna kinda.
Oh, by the way, I forgot to mention, we've got a note, not today, uh, bell that is. If you wanna, if you wanna ring it.
So, I did wanna kinda come back in, and I guess, I mean, I didn't know Councilwoman Elliott was gonna say all that, but kinda go in with the same idea, because when I came, from our last meeting last week, this was gonna be a line item meeting. And so I came in with the idea, and I studied all this, and came in with the idea of we were gonna cut line items. And it is important to know, you know, we don't have to, but we should. Because we don't know what upstream effects this is gonna have. And as I kinda mentioned earlier, or alluded to, you know, when I voted back in June, June the third and tenth, or whatever day it was, for that budget, I, I, I voted for my district to get every bit of service that they are paying for. And this budget is cutting services, and, and we don't know what they are. So I'll give you an example. And so when I come in here, I come with the expectation that those who are carrying this legislation are gonna take the biggest hits. Because, and that's why I thought it would be a line item cut, because surely you wouldn't expect my district to take a hit when, when they, I already voted for them to get the services. I'll give you a great example. One point six million dollars from community development. That's a big hit. And we don't know where that's coming from. But I'll tell you where it can come from. It can come from John A. Patton, Frank Sherry Wyatt. It can come from Hickson.
Come on.
It can come from North River Civic.
Come on.
And North Chattanooga. That is one point five million dollars in operational cuts. So that is your one point five, and then whoever else, whether it's Tyler, Eastdale, Carver, Chris, Chris Ramsey, you lucky. I couldn't get you, 'cause you got, you got a truck. You got a truck, you have nothing. But if Paul wanna chime in, 'cause it's my jo- it's my job as the District Seven representative.
Right.
To make sure that whatever we vote, and I know what you're doing, I see what you're saying, you saying, hey, whatever come out of here, you already got co-sponsor, it goes on, you just wanna see Iggy to get voted up and down. I mean, you have had that conversation before, not, not, of course, in public, but we've had this conversation before. But I just need to get on record for my constituents, that however, whether it's at one point six seven, whether it's at one point seven one, one point ninety-three, ninety-nine, whatever it is, that my services are not getting cut. So whoever supports this, support it. Do your thing. But do understand, when I voted back in June, I voted for my people, we have four Head Start locations, three partnership locations, and one in Cedar Hills. When I look at that early learning cuts, and you were saying blanket cuts, does that cut the supplemental pay to the Head Starts? Is that cutting community forward? I have two community forward people at Camp, one at Camp Adonis, and one at Howard. I have a Head Start at Howard, you know. Who and what is it cutting? And I want the administration to know, whatever it is lands, don't cut none of my stuff, because we have already voted for this stuff. I don't know, city planning, same thing. I went through this budget, and I, I went through it before, but now I go back again, and city planning, same thing, we're looking at a transit study for Carter. You looking at the cut from city planning, is that cutting the resource to do that thing that is in District Seven? Because when I came in here, I was under the impression that it was gonna be a line item cut. Now we're coming in and saying, oh, it's the blanket cut. I don't agree with blanket cut, simply because it's an amendment. So what is it cutting? When I look at the executive branch, what are we cutting? Are we cutting Family Justice Center? Are we cutting Office of Community Health? Are we cut, what, what is it? And it's hard to, it's hard to support anything when you don't know what you're cutting. And I know it's this, I know this is here, and so, and we just got this, so I can't say I've looked through this, 'cause I have not, uh, because I just saw it, I just got it when I sat down. So I don't know what's in there, but what, you know, I can't say, I don't know what we are cutting, and I can't, I can't support that, 'cause I don't know what it is. So that's where I am. I just need my constituents to know that however this pan out, it make it a pass, the other pa- whatever pans out, we are keeping our services. That is to Mayor Kelly, that is to this administration, hey, Ellis, to this administration, I am keeping my stuff. All right, okay, okay. So that's all I wanted to say.
Let me, let me stress again. This ad hoc committee.
Right.
Is about an alternate version. I know there are some here, at least four of you, that are opposed to an alternate version. I get it, and I hear you. What I want us to do, there's at least four of us here though, that are for an alternate version. And I wanna get something set, so that we can get it on the agenda. Now, once we get it set, if you wanna rail against it, be my guest. But what I want to do today is to set an alternate version. And I wanna make sure that at least the sponsor and the co-sponsor are good with what we set. Now, if there's some of you around this table that are kinda not sure where you are, and you want to make some suggestions that you can get, so that you can get on board with an alternate version, I would love to hear it. Okay? That's all I'm asking. I wanna set an alternate version. Let's get it set, and then let's rail on it, or praise it, or whatever we wanna do, but let's set an alternate version, okay? That's all I'm asking. Councilwoman, first.
So, I just, I wanna understand, um, with your proposal, how does that leave us? That, that takes care of year one. That takes care of year one, correct?
That's.
So how does that leave us for, I, I think if we're gonna be making this decision, how does that leave us for year two, three, and four? Two, it's two-part question.
Yeah.
Um, assuming that there's a three percent COLA, how, I mean, where's the plan for that? It sounds like we're just setting ourselves up for having this, the same conversation a year from now, or sooner.
So I think regardless of whether we adopt the dollar ninety-nine, or we adopt this, we're gonna have to have a discussion about next year on the long year. I have said at this table multiple times, this is a multi-year approach. It's gonna be a lot harder, in my opinion. You ask the question, and I'm just gonna answer.
No, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to decide.
I think this is, I think this is something that we start after we pass this budget, whatever it looks like, addressing what next year looks like, this council. Because we will have to address this again.
So does that mean?
This is not gonna be a one and done, if, if we set it at the dollar ninety-nine. My point is, in my opinion, it leaves us very little room for next year if we set it at the dollar ninety-nine. If we set it at, uh, a dollar sixty-seven, dollar sixty-eight, whatever that might be, that at least allows us some room to come back next year, and look at another eight percent, or, or a nine percent increase, to address whatever inflationary, uh, costs that we've incurred over that past year. And address some of the concerns that, that is in the mayor's proposal. But I guess my point was, I have since, I have since March kinda relayed to my people, we've got to address fire and police pay. And so that's the reason I'm offering an alternate version, because this does exactly what I've told my people we were gonna do, was address fire and police pay.
So I wa- I wanna address fire and police pay, and I'm, so let me, it's kind of a, let's have a discussion versus a, I wanna discuss it, that, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, Councilwoman Dotley said she had a response to you about working on something for next year, but, I mean, you wanna address it now, or you wanna continue?
Let me, let me just get this thought out, and then, um, so in my thought process, I'm thinking in terms of, um, our, so constituents, we're gonna be potentially hitting them with an increase over the next four years, correct?
Possibly.
Okay, so, I mean, gen- things aren't gonna get any better economically, I, I would imagine. I mean, prices are gonna continue to go up, property values aren't gonna change, you know, they're not gonna go down. Um, so why, why wouldn't we, if we're just focusing on fire and police, why wouldn't we consider going ahead and securing something financially for the next four years?
Oh.
To include that COLA? And then, if we have to have a discussion, next year, we have the discussion about the other things. I mean, that's the sacrifice, if you will, you know, if, if, if we're gonna ask folk to, folks to sac- sacrifice. So I'm suggesting, um, maybe somewhere in the range of sixteen to twenty-six, twenty-eight cents more, to get us to that level where we can, we can cover at least the fire and police needs, because that's the biggest thing. I mean, all this stuff is important, and we're not cutting departments. We're not doing these cuts line by line across for departments. So that, that's what I wanna put out there for, for the discussion.
Clarify that, so you're, so you're saying?
So fire and police, fire, pass fire and police raises that get us through to fiscal year twenty-nine? So that covers it?
So allocating that, any of that.
So basically, you're saying, you're saying eighteen cents, 'cause we need eighteen million dollars.
So it would be?
We got five million, we need eighteen million. So you're proposing eighteen cents?
No, she's.
Well, it would actually be more. I mean, it depends on what you, I mean, I could go through and say, well, if we don't do the new fire station, that, that could bring it down, so it could be somewhere in the range of, um.
You wanna cover more than just fire and police pay raises?
I wanna cover what they need, their needs.
She wants to cover their cost of living.
For four years.
But it sounds like only allocating to fire and police, not to the other stuff that was in.
Not the other stuff, fire and police, uh, the, the fire apparatus, the fire station, I mean, all of the things that they said they needed.
That list from last.
Yeah, yeah. The only question I have, and I didn't see anybody here from, from the police department, but where did, the, there's a line item on here, vehicle supplement, CPD vehi- is that for new officers? Right now, there's, have a shortage of vehicles, so if they got fifty-five new officers, they'd have to buy fifty-five new vehicles? So, that could, but I'm just wondering if, um, if we go back to, let's focus just on fire and police, pay and, and res- the things that they need to get us up to the level of a full-fledged supportive department, which is.
What was that number?
Their raises, their, it would be, well, I went to the high end, I went one point eight three, which is actually the average of one point five five and one point nine nine, so it's in the middle. It gets them pretty close to, to what they needed. There's a little, there's a shortage of about a million, about one point seven million, but we could play with the numbers, but I'm just thinking, bringing it up a little to accomplish what they need to bring us up to standard, 'cause right now, we're substandard. And not just with pay, but with resources. And then we're not having to have this conversation in September, October, November, in preparation for having to tell the voters that they're gonna have another hike next year.
Well, I, I, like I said, I think this is a multi-year.
So then I'll.
I, I think this is a multi-year, regardless. I mean, that's the reason I feel like if we do, you know, if we did eight percent this year, if we do eight percent next year, we're, we're hitting along, uh, sixteen percent. We could do eight percent for three years and still not, you know.
You're not gonna be.
Put that on the back of the, of, of the.
So I'm, and I'm not, I'm not trying to debate you, I think I'm just trying to understand the math of it, because what's eight percent today, with inflation, next year will be maybe more like ten or eleven percent. So that number's gonna, but if we could secure that now, you've got that money set aside.
That's where we need an economist to come in.
I know, I know.
What we think inflation's gonna be over the next three or four years, so that we can look at this logically. I, I guess where I'm, where, where, look, I'm, I'm committed to going up to, to the fifteen million, to the, to the nine percent, by putting a million dollars back into community development. And get them to where their vacancies, they could freeze and nobody would lose their job. I mean, I, actually, the, I think the nine percent would, would get us fifteen million dollars, that'd be another two million dollars, basically, above what we need. So we could do a million for, uh, or a million and a half to community development, and that would make them completely whole.
Point of information.
Is, is one point six seven firm for you? Is that, you really want your, your alternate amendment to be?
That's right.
One point six seven? So it's not, you're not really debating the, not debating, you're not really looking to discuss that, that number. You're discussing how we adjust to get to that number.
What do we need, yeah, what do we need to adjust to get to?
Okay.
Well, the one point six nine.
Is your, is your top level?
One point six nine would be my top, I, and my co-sponsor, I mean, obviously.
Is that the rate?
One point six nine would be the rate.
Okay.
And that would give us fifteen million dollars.
I would agree with that as well.
Nine percent increase.
That would be a nine percent increase. I, I, look, I've had my constituents tell me they don't, they're not opposed to a modest increase, and that's what I'm looking for, is a modest increase. That, and, and, and that we, you know, we address what we said from the very beginning we was gonna address, and that was our fire and police pay raises. So, you know, as, as the, now, somebody is forced to sponsor another alternative, an alternative two, go for it. But as far as the alternate version that, that me and my co-sponsor is, is gonna sponsor, I mean, I think we're looking at, at, at a top end of a dollar sixty-nine. Uh, Councilman Harvey, I don't know where you fall in with that, if you're agreeable to that. Councilwoman Hill?
I could, I, I mean, I'm looking for a middle way, and I think one point six nine, nine percent, if that's something that addresses colleague concerns specifically about the suggestion of the fifteen percent off of community development, that's fine with me. I mean, I, I brought this as a discussion starter, I think, you know, to be the one to say, here's an idea, you set yourself up to be kinda pulled apart by that, but so it goes, it starts a conversation. And I personally am very, I'd love to see your list, ca- I mean, that's what I thought we were getting today, and hopefully you've got it, so that we can look at, bring, bring your list.
Okay, wait a minute, I've got, I've got, so, huh, all right, um.
Cause that's awesome. If you wanna itemize lists, let's do it.
Vice Chair. And then, uh, Councilman Clark, and then, and look, please, keep it to, to the, um, alternate version, okay?
One point six nine, one point six nine or less.
One point six nine.
Or less, is that what you're saying?
Tell me how you'd like to see that one point six nine spin.
Uh, no.
Tell me how you'd like to see the one point six.
Move this along, so other people can contribute.
This is Vice Chair.
No, I'm putting my name on it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Let me, she hasn't spoken, and then I'll get Councilman Harvey.
Okay, so, a couple of things. I have an issue with the fact that you say you did, you have decided what this council wants. And the last time I, the last time I, I consent, it's nine of us. So one person cannot speak and say, this is what we're going to do, it's this alternate version. I didn't do a vote on that alternate version. So, so to say that you can tell the council as a whole that you can speak for us as a whole, okay, that's, let, let me finish. You, you did, what, did you say, correct me?
I'm a sponsor and this is my co-sponsor, and we're co-sponsoring an alternate version that's a dollar sixty-nine. Y'all can vote that up or down. We're offering an alternate version.
Okay, but you said, you are going to do, this is what we're going, we're not gonna discuss it. There has never been anything brought before this council that we don't have an opportunity to, to discuss. Now, the second thing, I'm gonna make it plain and clear from the beginning and still in the middle and to the end. Great District Eight will not have, everybody around the room that's in here, everybody on the sound of my voice, TV cameras and all, not one brown cent removed from District Eight. If you all are the ones that having the issue with the tax rate, then you take it from your district. You don't even have permission to swallow fly that's flying in the area of the great District Eight. Cuz it's our fly. So don't touch it. That's what I'm just making it known. Okay? The second thing, this budget that Madam Chair has brought before us, y'all, it's got so many racial undertones in here that I have got some issues with. You come to community development and you want to take almost one point seven million away from community development. You want to hit early learning, you want to hit uh equity and community development. You want to hit, what else was up here? Uh, and then you wanna go with a blanket general government agency. There is a million agency, not a million, there are several agencies that is listed up under here. So let me tell you, I'm, you know what? I'm gonna go back to what was, was, was brought forth earlier a couple of weeks ago. When you say you wanna go blanket with this, and we don't know what those line items are. What they are, so a agency, so that makes me think you've got certain agencies in mind. You want to not have the funding that they are needing. So let me tell you, not gonna go with it. And if our council family as a whole will go along with this right here that will affect black and brown people tremendously, then y'all, we got a problem. We are really in a bad way, if that is the case. Now, I seen some things that came forth the last couple of weeks that made me, I said, okay, Lord, don't let my mind go in that direction, cuz I'm not trying to make it a black and white thing. I'm not trying to. But let me tell you, when you see this right here, so many racial undertones on here. Come on now, it can't be anything but. So we are going to be the ones that have to suffer because of if you don't want it, take it all from y'all district. The one that don't want it, take it from you all. Chief Rogue, do I make myself plain and clear? Not a brown scent, not even a fly that's flying around. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh Chairman Henderson. So I am open-minded. Um, you know, when you put forth the alternative version, you know, I think many of us, regardless of where our budget shortfalls are, we wanna cut fat, that's anywhere. We have to do it in our personal, but you know, the key word here is budget. And I've got a couple of questions about line items that I like to, cuz I, I recognize we need to stay on track about what this is about. And this is addressed to all the co-sponsors, so I hope you guys are ready to uh respond. So my first question is related to it's your own, it's this packet that I'm having trouble with. So there's a highlighted packet of page two and the regular packet. So I wanna do some comparative stuff here, just so I'm clear about what, what I'm looking at.
Yes. Throw, throw the other one away, throw the
Which one am I throwing away?
You see the one that's got the yellow?
Throw that one away, yes.
Throw that away. Keep the, keep the one that has a yellow one highlighted.
Okay, so I wanna go to page two. And right here on page two, you got manager of the community safety and gun violence highlighted in yellow. Is that correct? This is on page two. Just wanna be clear what I'm reading.
Yellow means it's actively being hired for.
Actively being hired.
The administration is working through the hiring process. This is the administration's yellow highlights.
And so everything else that's not highlighted, like for instance, the front desk receptionist under the Family Justice Center.
Is an open position that they're not actively hiring for.
And so, it's not highlighted, just please bear, please.
It's not highlighted.
It's not highlighted. So what does that mean to you?
So that means that is in that three million nine hundred thousand dollar total at the end of positions that I feel like could possibly be frozen.
And when you say frozen, Chairman, what do you mean by that specifically?
Frozen as in we would take, it's, we would take that funding and put it towards the fire police pay for this year. And that is something that we would have to address next year.
I get that, I'm just Yeah, so front, so this, under where it says Mayor's Family Justice Center, which is in District Six. They have asked for a front desk receptionist at fifty-two thousand, huh, at fifty-two thousand dollars. It is not highlighted. So are you recommending that that position be eliminated and then dissolved into the fire and police? I'm, I just wanna be sure what I'm reading.
I'm not recommending that, I'm saying that is an available place.
These are opportunities, yeah.
For a director to look at. As opposed to laying somebody off and eliminating their job.
I just wanna be clear because she and I are on the other end trying to, cuz y'all are rushing past some of this appendix stuff, and I don't like it, so I just wanna take my time.
I'm not rushing.
You know, I respect you, I like what I need to know. And I need to say on the record, you know, I am, I am open-minded. I know y'all are counting votes on who is one point nine-nine, and I'm talking to my people on a regular. And uh, and I'm open-minded about where cuts are. I believe we have to make personal cuts. So let's stick to the purpose of the ad hoc committee on cuts.
Sure, thank you.
So, let's go for, I've got some questions about the word impact. And I wanna use the example, I'm sorry, there's some, I, I'll pause, there's some light chatter, I will pause. I'm sorry, there, there's a conversation.
I will pause. Okay, ladies, Councilman Clark is
I just wanna make sure this gets out. Thank you, Councilwoman. I wanted you to talk about the word impact, and I was, I respect the fact that y'all are doing cuts. And initially, I knew we were talking about line item cuts, and that's fine, but these are blanket cuts. Which, I'm open-minded, so I just wanna say.
You're very open-minded to cuts.
So I wanna go to a particular line item, but that's okay. And this is to the sponsors of this bill because I want to go to community development, which is the committee that I chair. Let me be clear on that. And nobody's talked to me about any cuts. And I chaired this committee, so I think that's a little disrespectful, but it's okay, I'm open-minded. So we have one point six million that you guys are proposing to cut, blanket percentage. And I'm assuming that you all have looked at the community development line item budget, is that correct? Like, you guys know what the line items are in the community development budget?
Let, let me, let me make this. Let me make this proposal, okay? And I think I'm getting a consensus around um the higher amount, the one point six nine, which will get us two million dollars. I'm gonna propose that we make community development whole, out of that two million dollars. Listen, Councilman, are you okay with that proposal? Okay, so, so we're gonna make, we're gonna make community development whole.
What does that mean, whole? Like, leave it alone?
We're gonna leave it alone. Put the one point six million back in it.
That's fine, Chip. And I'm gonna keep going, so this is a committee to go line item on this budget, correct?
We'll put that back in community development.
So, thank you for community development. So let's drop down to economic development. If you don't mind. Cuz this committee is to open the hood and do line item cuts, so let's go to community development. Or economic development. You guys are proposing three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the cuts. And you guys, again, are aware of the line items, I just wanna put this on the record. You all are aware of the line items in, in those budgets, is that correct? All right, cool. So, let's you talk about the word impact. If you are doing a blanket percentage cut of three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, my question, in order to be open-minded, to support your alternative version, have you thought about impact? Now, let me tell you how I feel about that word. Let's take your individual salaries, and you all have bills, right? And so if I just came to you, Chairwoman Hill, and said, I need to cut fifty percent out of your personal budget. You would have to make some changes in how you live. And I remember, I wrote down one of your quotes, you said, we have to live within our means. And one of your quotes was, we also have to, if we're gonna make cuts, we have to start with city council first, is that correct? Do you remember seeing those comments?
I said that I put ten percent as a, a reduction for city mayor because I think it's important.
Correct, that you would, you would, you could understand that you would start with yourself first as a leader, that's what you said, okay. I just wanna be clear. So can we go back to economic development, three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars? So let's talk about impact. If we took out without any proposed cuts, what would be the possible impact? What would happen? If I took out three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars of that budget? Cuz you, you are presenting an alternative budget, and so that's fine, you don't wanna tell us what you're cutting, but can you at least tell us what it could impact? Cuz you all, we all have a line item budget.
Somehow, having responded to that, I think, I think it's interesting you say, what if you were asked to take fifty percent out of your personal budget? Because when I decided to go into uh public service, that's exactly what happened to my family. We cut, we cut our pay by fifty percent. It was a hell of a thing uh to, to figure out how to, how to live on half. So, for, using your example of economic development and what kind of impact would have, so um, I have listened and studied and spoken with department leaders over my time of service. And I can tell you that when I speak with our leader of economic development, and when I speak with our leader of workforce development, they are both um pretty transparent about the fact that not all of our investments have been managed with the intentionality that they would like to see them managed with. They themselves see opportunities for different ways to do the work. And even I, as the person who cares very, as a person who cares very deeply about affordable housing, I see this Economic Development Director of Housing and Community Investment as one that we don't need to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on that as a city because we have organizations in our, in our community that are already doing this work. And I believe strongly that there are things that organizations outside of our community or outside of the city government do better than the city government, and we should let them, let them do that.
So I, I wanna keep into what this committee is about, right? We're talking about line item cuts here, correct? Or blanket cuts.
So Councilman Elliott last week said he didn't like the idea of blanket cuts. I suggested five percent, I don't find those to be
Listen, I'm gonna hold you to what you all said you guys are gonna do, so we're here in an ad hoc committee.
Said he wanted to bring line item cuts, and then Councilman Henderson said he'd like to have an ad hoc committee meeting.
So we're bring, I'm, I'm about to make a proposal, I'm just trying to get clarity. So economic development and that line item, you specifically recommended cutting, you wanted your cuts because
No, I, my cut is a five percent cut to economic development.
I said, what would be the impact if you cut that, and you said it would be a staff position, did you just not say that?
This is an unfilled staff position that if I were the Director of Economic Development, Richard, Richard Beeland, I would be saying, let's look at the big picture. And how do I do my?
So that is impact, any other impact, I, what would, what would that price, if I took away that money, just pretend like it was your budget, in your household? If I took three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars out of your budget, what would that impact? Would you have to do something less? Would you have to sell something? Would you have to add something like I? And the point that I'm making here, because you can't answer that question, is because you have not done the due diligence. Well, I just asked you the question, can you tell me, if you took out three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, what would be, that's budgeting, this is macroeconomics one-on-one. So we're gonna go with this blanket, right? Cuz I'm open-minded, I might vote for it. But you have to, you're here to ta- to, to propose your blanket percentage cut, right? Without a line item. So my question is, is that if I take away, like if I cut off your arm, you'll have one less arm. If you take away three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, cuz I'm going on each line item, I'm not done. What would be the impact? You just gave an example that it could be a position cut. So my deal is, be, do your due diligence and tell me why you're proposing this as a blanket percentage cut. That means you have not done your homework, because I can
No, 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 let me stop you right there. I told you before, we're not here to debate this proposal. We're here to figure out what this proposal is. Now, after we figure out what it is, let's debate it out there.
Talking about the proposal.
Let's debate it out there.
No, you're asking, you're asking
You're asking me for impact.
Which is what you're doing in this percentage of change.
Let, let me make this statement. You, you said, what if we, what's the impact if we take it out of this budget? My question to you is, what's the impact to our taxpayers when we take it out of their pocket? They're not expecting a thousand dollars more a year in, in, in their expenses. That's gonna be an impact to them. My point is this, this budget is painful. It's gonna be painful to taxpayers, it's gonna be painful to our city. What, what we're trying to figure out is, how can we ease that pain so that everybody shares a little bit?
Trying to have that discussion about your proposal, but y'all don't wanna do that.
I'm not wanting to debate it.
What, I'm just asking a question.
Let's set it, and then we'll debate it. Let's set it.
Do you mind if I continue asking questions about your line items that you guys are proposing?
Let's set it, and then we'll debate it, okay? Can we do that? We're supposed to debate at this point.
You're not supposed to be debating until you're in a public meeting, this has been advertised.
This is not a debate, this is a question about a proposal. I asked their question, I, I have not debated anything, I have asked
There's gonna be
You're not gonna ask questions, I'm not gonna be in the meeting.
There's gonna be an impact to every department that's gonna serve, that's gonna get a cut. There will be an impact. There'll either be a service impact, there'll be a, a layoff impact. There'll be some sort of impact to every department.
There's a percentage of change column, it literally says the word change, that, which means impact. That's right, right, so my question is not a debate. Uh, Chairman, both Chair people, it's not a debate. I'm literally asking a question from this document, that it is in red that says change. Let me use the word differently.
That's how much
What change will come to these departments if I take out that amount? And you should be, have done your due diligence to be able to answer that question. I don't need to be here. Because I am offended, and cuz I respect both of you. God, I respect both of you, but this is so irresponsible to ask me to consider a proposal with a percentage change, and you can't tell me how to go back into my community and say, oh my God, I'm gonna take this much money out of economic development, and I can't articulate what the change is. That's not fair. And I wanna support your proposal, cuz I believe we need the cut, but I cannot do it.
Have you got some line items that you?
I do have some line items, would you like for me to start on the line? I'm asking these questions for clarity. Let's start in Councilwoman Hill's district. Um, let's start in community development, how many community centers do you have? Let's cut them off, that's my first proposal. That's my first proposal. Uh, Chairman.
Do you know how much that will be?
I don't know, do you know, you guys are proposing?
Councilman Clark, collectively, one, two, and three, that's one point five.
Collectively, my, Councilman Clark, collectively, one, two, and three, that's one point five million.
Okay, so there we go. One point five. Alright, so let's go. Can we, can I keep going?
So you're, now you're talking about sponsoring another, uh.
Well, I'm doing this based off y'all's algor- algorithm of, of y'all's proposal. You presented.
Okay, as, let me say this. As sponsor of this amendment, I, I, I do not recognize that proposal.
Okay, so you only wanna talk about your proposal in this meeting, is that correct?
Well, all I'm saying is, I would not entertain cutting those.
Alright, so I won't, I won't.
Because we've already decided we're gonna put the money back in community development.
Right, I know, but I'm, there's, there's other, there's eighth through you here that I would like. I just started with community development. And thank you for considering.
Do you have a list that you can hand out?
I can do it verbally if that's okay.
Sure, it sounds like it's, it's meant sort of for shows.
We've had the budget since June. It's not a show. You've been doing it as a show.
But you don't think it's for show?
You are doing it for show. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Look, look, greatest showman woman on earth, because you don't have.
I'm about to, look here. I'm about to adjourn, I'm about to adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn it.
If we can't. Because we, we.
Show. I'm gonna tell you the show is the mess.
We're gonna do this in order. We're gonna do this in order, okay? All, all I'm asking is, do you, do you have a list?
I said I would like to do it verbally, and she says that I'm putting on a show.
Okay.
So would you like for me to stand up and do a jig to put it on a show?
Councilman.
Don't, give me your list. You know I respect you, but I don't, this, this, I don't do.
So you wanna eliminate, you wanna eliminate.
I'm just, I'm asking a question about your proposal.
Okay.
Okay?
And let's talk about it.
And I would love to talk about it. Is that why we're here?
We're here to set it, okay? We're here to set it. If you'd like to make recommendations.
Yes, I would like to make recommendations based off the principles our wonderful Chair has said, when she said that we have to start in our own backyards for us and live within our means.
Yep.
And so let's start in your backyard. You are the co-sponsors. Can I start in y'all's backyard?
Let's talk about the alternate version. So that we can set it, is all I'm asking.
We've, let me tell you something. Cities across the country do this, and it's online. And this is, and we just left a conference where they talked about this. And it's sad to be on camera and to see us do this, cause I think this is irresponsible budget. And this is not even how we do our personal budgets. How can, no, I don't even wanna hear it. You're talking about a show? Oh, yeah. Here's a show. I'm walking out. But this is the deal. This is not responsible government? If you, if you want me to consider a proposal, do it in whole.
Okay. Okay. I've got Councilwoman Hill on this.
Um, I just, I would like to clarify the spirit with which I brought these ideas.
Yeah, your spirit is always.
Spirit with, the spirit with which I brought these ideas to council is the same as which I described them, what, two, three weeks ago when I brought them, which is, I thought through, and as a representative for District Two, what are the core essential elements of a city? And I listed those elements, and then I made what I consider to be minimal cuts to get us to the halfway point. What I'm hearing and learning from my colleagues is that other part, other representatives in other districts see that community development is also an essential service of government. I think that is a very reasonable point to discuss. And if it is, in fact, a, an essential part of government, then I'm completely fine with moving that to a zero percent reduction. I brought ideas. I expected that many of us would bring ideas to get us to that point. To, to suggest that this is a, I feel like the, the body of my work does not, um, deserve, has not earned, um, being called, um, irresponsible, uninformed, racist. That is not the way I do my work.
I never called you racist. I said it had racist undertones. There is, no, there is a difference.
Has the floor.
There is a difference.
I have not, I have not found.
She's got, she's got the floor.
I have not found that the work that I do and the way that I do it would earn being called uninformed, irresponsible, or done with racist undertones. In fact, what I consistently am told by the community is that my work is thoughtful, that I'm a listener, that I am curious, that I try to find practical responses, and that I work hard to make sure that everyone belongs. So it concerns me that that would be something that, that I missed as I put this together. So, again, community development. I hear my colleagues saying that that is important to you, and I am completely fine. And I think if we were to, with this, uh, with this proposal, alternate proposal, go to the one point six nine, we would more than cover the originally suggested reduction. But I would also like to add that I think that it is more responsible to allow a department head to decide the way to allocate the money that they have been allotted through a budget. They know best the goals for their budget, the intent that the mayor has, and I expect them to act as professionals to, um, further their work and their priorities regardless of the amount of money that they have. And I acknowledge that the pace, thank you Councilwoman Burris for bringing this up last week, the pace at which that work may proceed could be different depending on the money. Councilwoman Dotley pointed out, she's got some centers that are, that are critical. And you said you have, that, that are well-loved by the community and much-used. You said you have a center or two that are the heartbeat of your community. I don't see why anyone would ever make a recommendation as a leader of that department to reduce those centers. But I do know that we have underperforming centers, and I would say that in District Two, we have underperforming centers. Does that mean that we need two instead of one? Does that mean that District Four needs one instead of zero? Does that mean that District, I, I like, I, I, I don't know every center, but I know that Cedric's working hard to know everything about every center and capture the data, and look not just at centers, but he's been in charge of community development as a whole. And Councilman Clark has said there is fat to cut. Councilman Elliott has said he is, he is open to cuts. I, I'm concerned that somehow this has become, it feels like we've gotten to a point of a zero-sum game, and that's not how this council works together typically. Somehow we are finding ourselves where we've been turned against one another. It's not, it's not healthy, and it's not, it's not useful, because we can, this is a conversation about compromise, and in our greater world, compromise is not something that people do. Um, it's a sign of weakness. I think compromise is a sign of good decision-making. So, um, if, if this proposal gets no votes, okay, but I think it's good we had the conversation. Um, and, and I personally will always be very happy to have such conversations.
So, uh, let me, let me make this statement as a Chair. Uh, Councilwoman Hill, thank you for all your hard work on this, and, and I certainly appreciate sort of it being the springboard and the, and the launchpad of where we've left from. I, I have stated to begin with, and we're running out of time, this purpose of this meeting was to set the, uh, alternate version. Let me make this suggestion, and I wanna look at my co-sponsor to see if he's okay with this. If we go to, um, if we go to the fourteen cents, which would be one point six nine, that gives us fifteen million dollars, which would put us two million dollars over what, you know, what we're looking at right now. My suggestion, uh, Mr. Co-sponsor, would be to put the one point six million dollars back in community development. Put, uh, restore early learning, uh, by putting a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars into that line item, or that budget item, and then split the hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars that, well, I'm sorry, the three hundred and sixty-eight, split that between the executive branch and the, uh, uh, information technology. Are you, are you good with remaining the co-sponsor with those suggestions?
Yes.
So, okay. Alright, so as far as I'm concerned, as the sponsor and the co-sponsor, this is what we'll set the alternate version as. Now, I've got Councilman Harvey that has not spoken, Councilman Davis, and Councilman, uh, Elliott, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Dotley.
Put me at the end, then.
I'll put you at the end. Councilwoman Burris. Sir?
Can your lawyer speak at some point?
As soon as they get through. Okay, uh, Councilman Elliott. I mean, uh, Councilman Harvey, I'm looking at.
My life's gonna break.
I'm looking at, yeah, that, that's it.
Um.
They're twins.
That's right. I didn't expect to have to say this today. Um, that's okay. Um, you know, the first week that we were elected, we, uh, Madam Chair, set a list of principles in which we were to govern ourselves, conduct ourselves. One of those was respect and mutual respect, which is something I brought up from the very beginning, and I specifically said, when we disagree, and we will disagree,
and we should.
as we should, that we not make it personal, and that we be able to debate one another without name-calling anything like that. So I just wanna re- remind us, and I, uh, I see Tom Griscum's in the room. Hi, Tom. Tom worked with President Reagan in the White House, and President Reagan once said, the person who agrees with you eighty percent of the time is a friend and ally, not a twenty percent traitor. I just want us to remember that. Um, this whole budget discussion, as I've said before, um, is, is something I've not taken lightly, not that I don't think any of us has taken lightly. It's a, um, it's a heavy decision. Um, again, I think all of us agree around this table that fire and police should be our number one priority, uh, to get done and to get them where they need to be. Again, I, i- it's such a, it's such a heavy discussion. Uh, I've had calls, uh, since we started talking about this budget amendment, when a gentleman said, um, I'm gonna have to move out of my home uh, if, if you raise my taxes, um, to a dollar ninety-nine. Um, and, and so that, again, I, we're gonna disagree, and we're gonna debate this, um, but I, I wanna, I hope everybody knows, just from my perspective, and I, I don't wanna speak for the whole council, but I feel like we're all here for the right reasons, um, even though in some of these conversations, we forget that. That's all. I, I, I just want us to remember why we're here, that we, um, e- even though through, through these, um, these recommendations of the cuts, um, I don't, I don't, it's not personal to me, um, and I hope it's not personal to anyone else. Uh, we're simply trying to find a solution that gets us to the same goal that we're all here for. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Davis?
Yeah, just to kind of echo that. I, I don't doubt that anybody around this table, um, has anything but good intentions, um, and wants to do right by our police and fire, uh, but also by our taxpayers. Um, and so to get back to the idea of impact that Councilman Clark brought up, um, that's, that's where I start looking at this issue, is what impact it will have. Um, and like Councilman Harvey, I've had a lady, um, in my district who actually moved to Chattanooga uh, from a town in Georgia where she could no longer afford to live, given the property tax burden, insurance burden, all of the costs of living. Um, she made a, a very intentional decision to move here because she could afford it. Um, and now she's worried about that. And so that's the impact that I'm focused on, and, and the way that, that I'm approaching this. Um, I, I do think that it's been approached very thoughtfully. Um, I don't think any of us can know the impacts that each of these individual cuts will have, because unlike the administration, uh, we're, we're not working in these departments every day. Um, but, um, I, I know that we've all looked at the budget line items and looked at the numbers, and what we're doing right now is trying to make that work in a way that, that serves the best interest of our police and fire, um, police officers and firefighters, um, and, and also our taxpayers. We're trying to balance the two, and, and that will be difficult. Um, but I, I do support this alternative proposal. The good news is, though, if this proposal passes, police and fire will be taken care of. If the mayor's proposal passes, police and fire will be taken care of. Um, and, and again, I don't have any doubt that anybody around this table had any intention but to do anything other than that, and both of these proposals do that. And, and those are my remarks.
Alright. Uh, Councilman, actually, I think Councilwoman Dotley's first, and then I'll come back to Councilman.
Thank you so much. So it is, so the proposal you all are bringing in is the one point six nine. Um, the only other question I had about that, and I don't think that one included the Station Twenty-One, the items they needed. Is that right?
Neither does Mayor Kelly's budget.
It's not in there either, for the Station Twenty-One?
No. Uh, Station Twenty-One is, uh, with the fifteen people and the.
Is that the east border?
Apparatus.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, it would be four million dollars would be the cost. I did, uh, I brought that work last week.
Which is one point six or one point seven. It was in a previous one that you brought.
It was. It was on a worksheet last week that I brought, and it didn't get any, he didn't wanna sponsor that.
Uh, well, and I guess my concern is, and I know we've said it, but I'm gonna say what I've said about this one. It's simply because our current, our firefighter, our fire service currently has an ISO one rating, which helps with our homeowner insurance. They are going back up for recertification in the next, do anybody know, next year, year or so?
They can pop in at any time. Typically every ten years, um, or they can pop in at any time.
Right, so my concern is, and they holding on to the ISO rating. It wasn't like a gleaming one hundred, okay? So if we don't get, this is just for overall, cause again, I'm a homeowner too. I pay homeowner insurance as well. And any impact to that ISO rating is gonna impact everybody that owns something. It don't matter who you are, where you live. Um, because if we go that, what does it go to? A ISO two rating? No, how's it go? That's gonna impact our homeowner insurance. That's impacting everybody. I saw that on there initially, and I, then when I got this one, I was like, oh, it's not on here. I do think we need to add that on to this, even though I'm not in support of this. I'm not, but I'm here to voice my people's concern in a way. Um, because if we loo-, if they come in and they have to be recertified, or they pop in and we don't have the, we don't have this, cause it takes six hundred days to get the, as, as I learned from Madam Chair. We have to already have it allocated. Then it takes six hundred days, and I think Councilwoman Burris kinda mentioned, like, we need to fund police and some of the things they need, because that's gonna be a loss. That's Station Twenty-One. If we don't get the apparatus, if we don't get that taken care of, and they cannot improve that response time, that's gonna be everybody's homeowner's insurance. It don't matter if you live in East Burnup, East Chattanooga, downtown. So that is one that I would, I don't know, again, it's not my thing, it's y'all's thing.
But you might be able to get Mayor Kelly to reallocate, cause he does not have that in this proposal. No, he has one point one for fire apparatus, but the fire apparatus is one point seven. And then it's a fo- it's four million total needed, so.
From, but that's his. I'm talking about this one.
I know, but I'm saying if that's important to you, which I agree it's very important, you might talk to the administration about changing this to make sure that that is allocated for within this one.
That work is not in the one point nine nine budget.
Correct, it's not the one point nine.
So, so let's, you, you talk to Mayor Kelly about that.
But I'm talking to y'all about this one right now.
Well, we've already said.
Well, we're not gonna, listen. I listen, I sit here listening to y'all all the ti- hold on. I sit here listening to y'all all the ti- don't cut me off, Chip, cause that's what you do.
I'm not cutting you off.
I need you to let me finish talking.
Go ahead.
I appreciate you, Madam Chair. What you're not gonna do is cut me off when I'm sitting here trying to ask a question, when I'm trying to figure out, what am I doing? Now, I have been kind, and I have been nice. I have sat through these budget sessions, let y'all say whatever you want. You sat in that chair, you cut off every last one of these council members, except them two white guys.
Come on.
Now, you gonna have to stop this. This don't make no sense. Now, Madam Chair, again, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out to me, and I will continue to call you Madam Chair. I will talk to Mayor, uh, Mayor Kelly about that, but what I was asking, because this impacts my homeowner insurance rate, was, and my people in my district, is in Station Twenty-One. Can we, can you all look at, in this right here, even if this passes? Even in, even if this passes, could you look at possibly adding that in there? Again, I am not in support of this. However, I'm asking. If you don't, I'm totally fine with that. I will go to Mayor Kelly and ask him about adding that to, I think I need gotta ask over here. Y'all here for me over there. So that's, oh, uh, thank you, uh, Council, De- Darren. Thank you, Darren, Darren. So, and I will go back to what Cody said. It is about mutual respect. I sat up there when we had budget sessions and listened to everybody. I tried to give y'all, you know what I'm saying, everybody their own voice, because that's just how I am. I'm from an oppressed people, and I know what it feels like to have your voice oppressed. But when I'm sitting in here talking and trying to get clarity, my Madam Chair is trying to help me, and you cut me off, Chip, and you know I love you, me some Chip Henderson. You know I do. But I won't tolerate that. You're not gonna do that. So I ask for the same mutual respect that I have given all of you in here while I'm trying to make. So I ask for the same mutual respect that I have given all of you in here while I'm trying to make this point, even if you disagree, cause I do disagree, and I'm sure y'all disagree with me. But I'm asking for that same level of respect. So, that, and then to Madam Chair's point, um, coming into this meeting, I had, I mentioned, uh, when I came in, my intentions, and maybe it was unclear when we came in here, I thought we were coming in here to talk about when, uh, Councilman Henderson mentioned, uh, the line item cuts. He mentioned it last week, that we were coming to do line item cuts. So I came in here with that in mind. So that's why it's a little bit, um, perplexing for me to go in now and look at this. And we just got this information right now. So because we've gotten all this new information, it's very difficult to, to see where we're landing, cause now we're saying it's an extra 3, $3 million in here. So I'm just trying to navigate and make sure that I'm getting all the information I can from my position was, as I get ready to prepare to send a communication to them. So now you are bringing a 1.69, right? Mayor Kelly has 1.99. In either case, we don't have apparatus for you. Okay, for Station 21, for me too, cause it's my apparatus too, cause I need us to say. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm clear. Okay. And I mean no disrespect to you, Chairman Henderson, but I really didn't appreciate being cut off when I was trying to get some clarity. All right. Thank y'all so much. Thank you all, yes, I am.
Councilman Elliott?
I feel like we need to pray.
Oh, I pray for my king, I'm good.
I appreciate what my colleague said, and, you know, uh, I always give it a spirituality, even when things get heated. Um, just so I'm clear, this 1.69 doesn't include your cuts, your proposed cuts? Is that, is that what that was?
Say that again.
So what it sounds like, what it sounds like Chip is suggesting is that, so if, if we do a, if we do a 14-cent increase instead of the proposed, originally proposed 12-cent increase, we, at 1.69 military, we will produce $15 million in revenue. But we, that would give us $2.1 million in unallocated revenue if we did that, which would allow us to take away, to, to strike the cuts that are here. So what, what this amendment would do is it would keep whole fire, police, community development, early learning, um, parks and outdoors, public works. Um, all of those would be kept whole in this. They would see no reductions, and fire and police would have the full salary increase that has been requested. In addition, he listed out some other money, which I didn't totally follow, but would, um, I need to see those numbers. But it sounds like he's suggesting that some of the remainder of that would go to IT, um,
An executive branch.
And executive. Now, I personally like all of it to go toward paving, any excess, but I'm, but again, I'm here with open hands, I'm happy to, to compromise, so.
Well, can I explain? And I don't, look, it's never my intention to cut anybody off. And I apologize if, not if, I apologize for cutting you off. I was trying to, I guess, explain or, or, but, uh, Count, um, Madam Chair, what, the reason I suggested putting some of it back into executive branch is because Councilwoman Burris seemed to be very concerned about, uh, the front desk for the Family Justice Center, being on, being on the list of possible cuts.
Okay, makes sense.
Putting that money into the executive branch could take that line, that off of the table.
Got it, okay. Thanks for that.
And that's all I was, I was thinking there. Uh, IT, I know that is, uh, something that we were trying to get up and running, and, and they had one of the biggest cuts. And so, I just, what I did, the remaining $368,000, I divided it by two, with half of it in executive branch and half of it in the, uh, uh, information technology branch. And, and like I said, my purpose for this meeting was to set an alternate version, and I wanted to come out of this meeting with an alternate version set. And so, this is it.
I feel.
Uh, my co-sponsor is, is happy with it, and he's ready to go with it. I'm happy with it. Now, this thing is ready for debate. We hit the, we hit, we can hit the floor and debate it.
I still have the floor.
Huh?
I still have the floor. I wasn't finished.
Councilwoman Hill had the floor.
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So I cut you off.
I was answering a question.
Both of y'all did.
No, I answered your question.
My apologies, sir.
Um, so.
Trying to run this meeting the best I can.
It's, it's been interesting.
It's tough.
I appreciate you guys, um, hearing my, my concerns from other colleagues about community development. Those are very important in my district. I think, from my perspective, I was caught off-guard, as I think what, uh, Councilwoman Dotley said, you know, these are some of the cuts I expected, line item cuts. Having a conversation, okay, what does vacancies look like? I was not expecting for us to revisit the thing that I was concerned with, because I expressed my concern about line item cuts last week. It seemingly encouraged your thoughts about this ad hoc committee, uh, which I thought we were gonna be going line by line. Had we started that out, uh, and even, I think there would have been a level of compromise of looking at, okay, you want 5 million from general government, us opening these books and say, where are we gonna find 5 million? I think that would have been a much more productive use of our time to actually see that. Because I don't think it is responsible to offer these blanket numbers to an administration that already says they don't think they need to cut. And so, they may not be aligned with what we already voted for. And I'm concerned, like, I, I looked in these agencies, cause that was the first thing I looked at.
So the agencies are not cut at all.
They're untouched.
Yes. So, that, those are, those are some of the things I was concerned about, you know? I have projects in my district, there are some of these line items that we fought for. And so, that's just my suggestion, or my, my reflection on how this could have been done a little bit sooner, uh, little bit smoother, excuse me. I would have loved to see us actually do the line item cuts. Even these, here, I would have loved to us to go through these jobs and say, okay, how's this gonna impact operations? Because if we're gonna suggest line item vetoes, I mean, line item cuts or reallocations, whatever we wanna call them, it's only responsible for us to say, how does this alter operations? Does us pulling, uh, IT managers out of the budget, is that gonna significantly decrease the effectiveness of our, uh, uh, project management office, our PMO office? You know, so those are, those are conversations I want us to have. Are we gonna be able to actually serve people if we pull a registered nurse navigator? Uh, you know, so, these are, these are questions I would have loved for us to visit today. I know we're running out of time, but, um, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Do you, do you care the city attorney?
No, I, I'll use my ti, use my time to the city attorney.
Mr. Attorney? Yes, sir. I want to sit up here just a minute here. Coming back from my anniversary events here, I did not realize I would be getting into a nice, fun meeting like this, but I don't think anyone can accuse us of not having an open meeting at this point in time. Absolutely an opportunity for everyone to have an opportunity to speak.
It's a real, it's a real discussion.
Real discussion, and that's what you're supposed to have here in an open meeting-type session on here. So just be aware of that, and it has been posted in that regard, and it has been, and for that matter, minutes will be tapped, kept of your meetings here in compliance with the open meeting law. So what I did, at least after I understood that y'all were having a little bit of issues back and forth on here, was to try to go to our nice, uh, ordinance number 14239, which was passed on June the 3rd on first reading and second reading on June the 10th. And the thing that y'all have to do at this point in time, before we can get tax bills out to the public here, and that has to go out by October 1st here, that's one of the requirements under state law, is to actually appropriate a certain amount of money for the government's expenses of the municipal government for this coming year, and to fix the rate of taxation on all taxable property in the city. That, by your earlier ordinance, was not done at that point in time, because the assessor had not established the amounts on here. Uh, what we did know, at least at, at the initial time when all this was going through, is that you needed somewhere in the range of $348,90,647 to be able to have a, a revenue fund that was coming in. And you needed to make sure that your expenditures equal that amount. And that's required by state law, that all of those expenditures and the revenues match each year. And if you don't do that, you got a real problem. So the rate of $1.55 has been at least stated by the assessor at this point in time, and y'all have to fix the appropriate rate of taxation, which is due. So, uh, bottom line, you're gonna be having to do some type of amendments to the, uh, original ordinance that was passed back in June at this point in time to establish those amounts. And you've gotta look at, uh, what is, uh, the requirement if you do so. It's gotta even up. So, uh, there are requirements in the, the code that you've got here at page 69 of your current ordinance. I, I went through and highlighted everything I had in there about it on, on the, the code. You might look at that, because it does specifically have the requirements, well, let me get to 69 here. Does have the requirements that pursuant to the charter, and the sections of the charter that are involved in here are Section 6.81, which says the annual budget shall contain at least as much information as required by Tennessee law, as may be amended from time to time. And it, it has to have expenditures for each department, and expenditures for the funds have to be listed separately by salaries and other costs. So the budget ordinance, if y'all hadn't looked at it recently, has got all these references here about the, the positions and the amounts. That has to be in the code on here. And, uh, once you do that, and you put those in the ordinance on here, it has to balance. And, uh, pursuant to Section 16 of the code that you've currently adopted right now, it's not lawful for any department, agency, or branch of the government to spend more money than was appropriated for them. So that's why it's important to have those appropriation amounts out there. And, uh, the Section 17 on page 69 of your current ordinance also says, if at any time the actual receipt of revenues is projected to be less than the estimated revenues, it's the duty of the mayor to initiate an ordinance amending the budget ordinance. So if there's something that doesn't quite add up at that point in time, the mayor has to bring that to you in order to get things done, so that it can be, uh, otherwise changed and the appropriations made in the judgment of the city council. So it is going back to you at that point in time. If there's something that, uh, is involved, that the mayor initiates another amendment to you, that that would occur. At this point in time, I believe you're in that process. You're being told that there is an issue where the, um, uh, Fire and Police Department don't have enough money. Mayor's coming to you, saying that that needs to be done, and then y'all, uh, decide based upon the appropriations that you think are necessary. And that's in accordance with what y'all have previously adopted and in accordance with state law. So let's try to follow what we've done as our ordinance and our procedure as we're going forward. If you get an alternate version, great. If you don't get an alternate version, you gotta do things that will ma- match up, so the revenues and the expenditures will match.
Phil, let me clarify one thing, and I asked you last week. Yes, sir. We can appropriate by department.
You, you can, as long as you do.
That's what you told me.
As long as you do that and they match here in, in the provisions. You gotta do something where it works.
You're talking about revenue.
Yes, revenue.
Yeah, so, so we'll have a revenue, we'll have a revenue sheet and an expenditure sheet.
Revenue and expenditure, that has to match for each department, or else it will not comply with state law.
I wanna get, uh, we got just a few minutes, I wanna get Councilwoman Burris' comment, uh, and then we're gonna adjourn.
Yeah, I just, I have a quick question as I'm trying to make my decision, um, on, and I'm not sure which sheet matters. Let's go with the higher number, this sheet. The one that's got the bigger numbers on it.
Okay.
The bigger numbers. So this 12 million down at the bottom, the 12,888, um, you're suggesting if you go with the 1.69, that gives you enough money to add back in the 1,657 to community development?
That's correct.
So this number changes to whatever that amount is. It, that, that number, that changes this 12.88, correct?
It'll add about 15, it'll add.
Yeah.
It'll add to.
This 1.65 plus.
It'll add about 15.
Okay, all right. Um.
Community development on the reductions will read zero. Is that what you're asking?
Right, and so that amount gets added back in?
The general fund total's gonna.
Will increase.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the, the, that 358 number, is that what you're saying? That 358 number will get bigger.
The 12. And the 12.88 will also get bigger.
The red number.
Yeah. They both get bigger.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. That, that's my only question, thank you.
Okay, all right.
I can update this document, this digital version, um, and I can send it out to everybody.
That'd be great.
Based on this conversation.
That'd be good, okay. All right.
Hmm, okay.
Thanks, uh, thanks, everybody, for the lively discussion, and we will adjourn and see you at 3:30.
Listen to everyone in the public hearing next week.
And listen to everybody in the public hearing.